Call this meeting to order. Everybody please rise. Mr. Fortner, we need some prayer.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. I just thank you that we have the opportunity to come here and listen and learn and make decisions that positively impact our community. And Heavenly Father, I just continue to pray for those that are struggling with illnesses through the winter season, that you'll heal them. Thank you for everyone that's here and all the staff that makes this happen. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. All right, I have a quick statement. On January 24th, 2023 pursuant to Section 10151H7, the Board of County Commissioners had a closed meeting to discuss threatening or pending litigation in which the county is a participant, specifically the Navajo Nation redistricting lawsuit. The matter discussed in the closed meeting were limited to those specific to the notice of the closed meeting. Right. Presentation Yard of the Month, Ms. Shawna Wells.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to present the Yard of the Month for January. This gentleman has a beautiful home in Aztec, and I'd just like to thank him for keeping San Juan. I believe there might be some pictures I did.
There are a few pictures.
Okay, good, just so you guys can see, but this is the certificate for him.
Pictures of kids.
Very nice.
Thank you.
That's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Picture. Sorry. Photo op. All right, approval of agenda. Do you have any additions or changes?
Mr. Chairman, we do not tonight. Agenda is as presented.
I move that we accept the agenda as we have it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Consideration number one, consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes from December 20th to 22. Consideration of approval of regular minutes from January 3rd, 2023. Consideration of approval of finance check register for December of '22. Consideration of approval of treasure check register for December of '22. Consideration of approval of FY '23 budget adjustment number nine, Resolution 222348. Number six, consideration of approval of Resolution number 222347. Disposition of surplus or obsolete county property. Number seven, consideration of approval of Resolution 222337 authorizing the city of Farmington to submit a of the FY 2024 LDWI detox grant application. Number eight, consideration of approval of Resolution 222343 authorizing the sale of real estate property located at 805 Maddox Avenue in Aztec to Presbyterian Medical Services. Number nine, consideration of approval of Resolution number 222346 to clarify annual San Juan County road mileage of New Mexico DOT. And number 10, consideration of approval of Resolution 222344 supporting New Mexico DOT 2023-2024 local government road fund application. That's a lot. All right, I seek a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the 10 consent agenda items.
I'd second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. All right, new business. Update from the San Juan Historical Society. Laura Lee Harper, Ms. Walters, as I know her. It's my honor to introduce her as society president.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Honorable Members of the San Juan County Commission, and Mike Stark, and Tanya Shelby, and Low Jean Totichini, Gary McDaniel, and Steve Lanier, Chairman, Terry Fortner, and John Beckstead, Pro Tem. Happy New Year greetings and Happy Valentine's Day in February 14th. On behalf of the San Juan County Board of Directors, thank you for your generous funding of $4,000. Connections is the theme for 2022. I present the San Juan County Historical Society 2022 Year in Review. Devin? He's not giving me the response.
.................................... 2024, our 30 years archiving San Juan County history. ... 201 North Main Avenue, the path that comes, and is now bursting out the scene. County preferred, mighty town library, and locking. Government, cemetery. The society has established over 20 most on topics, from pioneers and outlawed, lost community, to historical cemetery. This year, the Board of Directors can ...............
I don't think you need to click here. Click.
...... And generous members and donors, the key doors open, upstaging for the future. San Juan County preferred, operates on ...
Nearly 30,000.
Thirty thousand. Future with dedication and research of county history with San Juan County has a rich history, and part of it is dinner, rally, oil and gas industry spanning here. This ring, the son, the two of those families who began in that industry, share their father's story.
Click.
............ Showcase Aztec, where Angela Watkins to share the stories known to those Aztecs. And we've heard when the Aztecs celebrate the Aztec The 2022 spotlight was Bonnie Nordstrom, after Bonnie wrote our 2022 book Farmington sadness. Bonnie Nordstrom, Bill Gates, and Dennis Hines, of the San Juan County Department in the Library of the Bridge Senior Living Center. Talk for office, senators, and members. Here is ready to their love in San Juan County. We encourage all of us to support our society with a small donation of annual.
Click.
One in San Juan County has a wild horse story. Actually, no story, but it's waiting to then all of our San Juan Bay people to the past. My dying, she's grandfather established dinosaur sponsored a wild horse project to get the word out about the film documentary, Rambo is what it's called, the history of the Hitlerian Mustangs and Mustangers. The result, hot July being over and it's a film screening at Farmington Civic Center. I have included guest support in Huntington and Durango Southwest Video Production, the Junior Semitans Heroes, and those street runners showcased their Ford Mustangs around the Civic Center Fountain. Local author Victor Hittin of Beta, and then my dear family is from Boston, Maine.
I have to click twice for the ending.
Meeting is for 2023 will feature ten elements, city and historic, barrel of the way James Day riding along with Catherine Davis. Billy Brown Doom are the first book by the San Juan County that early published in 1999. In his fellow archives, San Juan County the citizens are keeping it, and as San Juan County seeks to find innovative ways to house its growing treasure. So, March 11th, 2020 plan begins. It's bringing on May 3rd, Marilyn Wayborn and Stan Hillman, 14th and 17th, Peter Hill History and Education, and October 11th, they'll pass on natural gas, next stop to San Juan Basin. We will notify the public of any changes. Thank you.
On behalf of the San Juan County Board of Directors, gracias, and thank you for that $4,000.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, consideration of Resolution 222334 granting a cable television franchise. Ms. Erin Muffel.
Good evening, Chair, County Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. Before you is a consideration for a franchise agreement that been working on, I think, I don't know, about past year maybe, with Mike Stark and Joe Sawyer, to make sure we have an updated franchise agreement with the county. The biggest thing in that, I would say, is the customer service standards. Those have been updated. Formerly, we had some pretty old customer service standards, so I just wanted to make sure that was taken care of and updated. And then just a lot of renewed language. One thing that did want to make sure, there is competitive equity language in here, which allows any other cable franchise to operate in the county. So because there is this franchise agreement, that does not discriminate against any other cable franchise from operating. And this is also strictly just for cable. So I know there may be some questions about broadband. If you do have questions, happy to answer them. But just so you know, this agreement is specific just for the cable piece of it, which is required by FCC law that we have a franchise agreement with every municipality we operate with in order to be within the right of way. And I stand for any questions.
My question, what's your plans on expanding? After getting your report, I looked around and seen that there's a lot of areas still without cable.
Yeah.
I was pretty surprised.
Yes, I will say, we do have plans to apply for a New Mexico Connect broadband grant when that next wave opens up. We definitely have the San Juan County area as a priority for expansion, something that we would really like to do. So if we're able to receive some help with federal grants, state monies, we definitely want to do some expansion here.
But it is in the plan?
We
And that'll be
I mean, I can't make promises, but yes, that is our plan that we would like to pursue. Yes.
And then the broadband question, of course. Expansion of broadband, any certain areas you guys are looking at, or?
I would say, so like when we do the Connect New Mexico Pilot Program, we are going to work with the county on that. So we're not going to just say, this is what we're doing. We're going to work with the county and say, where do you see? I know La Plata was one that was a high need area, and there's a few other areas. But it's really, what does the county want? Where does the county see that there are areas that are underserved? And then we will make those the priority. So it's not, what does Comcast want, really? It's working with the community. I'll give an example. We did this in Duniana County where we received a grant, and we're currently working on that expansion now. And we worked with lots of community leaders, nonprofits. We had open sessions where people could join and just talk, like, where do you see areas of need? If it currently is served, you know, maybe it's very slow internet, but they're still paying $75. So just trying to make sure we're meeting the community's needs.
Right. Yeah, because one of them that I had found was Lee Acres, and I was really surprised with that because it's a pretty populated area, and it's within half a mile of a county building. And so I was really surprised that they didn't have a service.
Yeah, I would like, I will say, you know, there are so many areas we would like to expand to right now. Money-wise, of course, it doesn't make financial sense. At the end of the day, we're a business. So if there's only, like, let's say, 10 homes, it's, like you said, like, let's say it's a mile down the road, but it's going to cost us $1 million to reach those people. You know, it's just, we have to find a need, like a business need to do that. If we're able to supplement that, though, however, then there's that, you know, now we're able to reach more people. So that's why all these grants, federal money is so great, because not only us, but lots of other companies now have this opportunity to reach areas they weren't able to before, so.
National Association of Counties also has an app that's called Test It, and it's supposed to show the speeds in different areas. Is that anything that has been, that you're aware of, or know anything about? Because it's, they've asked us to note where we are to see what, you know, mark it, so we know where the speeds are or aren't.
I'm not familiar with that one specifically. I know New Mexico, the state of New Mexico has been working with FCC. They have some mapping data they've been working on, and that they've, they're trying to pinpoint. So then they can also take that into account to say, you know, this is where priority areas are across the state. But I will say, like, that's something that, you know, our team of engineers have been looking at, like, trying to do that on our own as well. As I mentioned before, you know, we are still trying to find areas of expansion, even if it's not something that's going to be supplemented. So like, let's say hypothetically, we don't receive that money, we'll try to find other ways to make it work, so.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing that I would like to point out is that this is a 10-year agreement. I can't remember if you stated that. And the franchise fee to the county will be 5% of annual gross revenues received from the operation of cable system in the franchise area. And Mr. Stark, is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, relative to the agreement, it does have provisions in here, which are similar to the previous agreement regarding general service obligations that Comcast is, to your question about expansion of cable TV, they're required to make available cable service to every residential unit within the franchise area, in areas with a minimum residential density of at least 30 dwellings per mile of cable system plant, and is within one mile of the existing cable system plant. So that does allow for the provision of areas that meet that density requirement within their distribution system to be eligible for connection. And I don't know if you want to share what that looks like for a residential customer who would be looking to request that service.
Yeah, that's a good point. So one thing that I receive emails and calls all the time, people will say, I'm this close, you know, how, you know, am I able to receive the service? And we'll have our team of engineers evaluate, see how close they are, see how far they are. You know, we're not always going to say, you know, oh, you're beyond that, we're not going to do it. If it's a little bit beyond it, we'll make it work. So it's all case by case. Sometimes there's arroyos and other things, and it is off, and maybe it's like 50, maybe it is like further than a mile sort of thing. So sometimes there are situations where it's like it's going to cost a little bit more, or we'll try to work with a community to see what we can do. But like the example you gave, that would be a great one for me to go back to and say, you know, if you're able to give me that information, we can see how close it is, and if we're able to do that. Because, you know, those are things we're always considering. A lot of times, we don't even know, people just have to bring it to our attention, so then we can get more people connected.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to mix apples and oranges here. So we've got the cable TV franchise resolution and agreement before you. But going back to the earlier comment about broadband expansion areas, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Muffaletto regarding other areas in the county, but it appeared, but Bloomfield, Aztec, La Plata, as well as Kirtland were areas of interest that they're looking at applying for grants at a statewide level. So Lee Acres, for example, if there was expansion out to Bloomfield down 64, that would help to bring proximity of broadband closer to some of the folks along that route. So we're very supportive of their efforts to try to find those dollars. And then also, our Community Development Department, Nancy Smith, has been working with the New Mexico Broadband Collective to survey and participate in the survey data that they're trying to collect that could make those dollars available either to local governments or private providers like Comcast to extend their service lines. So we are actively working on that here internally as well. Just wanted to provide that additional information to you.
Yes, thank you.
And if I could also note, also, I left a flyer about ACP. It's the Affordable Connectivity Program. So Comcast is participating in that. So if you have any constituents who receive Comcast currently, and, you know, maybe they're not able to afford internet, high-speed internet, they could qualify for free internet, potentially, if they qualify at home. We also have services where they can get their mobile phone and internet at-home package for $30 a month. So, but, you know, with the ACP credit, they could essentially get both, well, with that $30 a month, but they can get the internet piece for free, so.
A quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Erin, on new construction, does Comcast employ local people?
Yes, we do. We do. We currently employ over 500 people across the state. And the more projects we're doing currently with broadband, that requires us to hire even more locals. So like, let's say we were able to get a Connect New Mexico Pilot Program here in San Juan County, we would hire local construction workers to help with that piece. Yep.
Thank you.
And I can attest, like in Duniana County right now, we've been doing that.
Comments, questions? This is an action item. I'll seek a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution number 222334 granting cable TV franchise to Comcast.
Second thought. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Erin. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all for your time. I also left my business card on your desk here. If any questions ever come up, or you do have any constituents that, you know, like you mentioned, are kind of close, we are happy to evaluate and see if we can get them connected. Any questions on ACP, we can get them connected to the right people. And then, of course, complaints with Comcast, that happens sometimes. Please call me before you call the 1-800 number, so we can get it taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, input property tax rebate, Mr. Jim Cox.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, here. I come before you today actually related to a statute that we were unaware of previously. It's 7-2. related to a statute, uh, that we were unaware of previously. It's, it's, uh, um, seven-dash-two dash fourteen-point-three, uh, which, uh, requires the commission on the odd year to conduct a public hearing in January, uh, to consider an ordinance related to a, uh, property tax rebate that would benefit low-income property taxpayers. So, a little bit, uh, about the program, um, first and foremost, it's, it's not a, um, county-specific program, so it's a statewide program. Uh, so it wouldn't be managed through the assessor's office, um, and/or translated to the tax bills. It's something that's handled directly with taxation and revenue. So it's, it's a income tax rebate. So it's, it's only for folks that are actually filing their state, uh, income tax return. What the rebate, uh, does is, is anybody that has a modified income of twenty-four thousand or lower, uh, the statute sets certain percentages that you could receive essentially a rebate off of the tax that you pay on your property tax bill. Now, that doesn't mean that, that, um, you know, they get it right away. So they're, they're paying their property tax bill as it becomes due through the normal process. Uh, but then on the tax return, they would, would submit for this, uh, potential rebate. Now, it caps out at, at, uh, twenty-four thousand in terms of income, uh, but applying that percentage, the maximum rebate that each individual could get is a hundred and seventy-five dollars for an individual and, uh, three-hundred-and-fifty, uh, for, uh, a married, um, return. Uh, you know, when, when we look at, you know, how might this, this impact the county, we, we first, uh, kind of polled the other thirty-two counties, who, who has actually enacted, uh, this ordinance. And currently, only Santa Fe County and Los Alamos County are the, the two that have, have implemented this rebate. Uh, we did ask, uh, the New Mexico Taxation and Revenue Department, hey, you know, these, these two counties have, have actually implemented it. They've implemented it for quite some time now. Uh, the last three tax years, the rebate paid, uh, by Santa Fe County was, uh, for, on average, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, and then Los Alamos County was roughly thirteen-thousand on average. Um, so that's kind of where, where we started. And, and then we also asked Tax and Rev, um, could you provide us with the detail as to how many San Juan County taxpayers would, would, uh, meet the twenty-four thousand and below threshold? They had identified for San Juan County, uh, there's roughly, for the twenty-twenty-one tax year, there's roughly seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two, uh, returns that could potentially qualify. Now, we, we qualify that with just saying it's just those that had twenty-four thousand and below in, in income. So then what we have to do is look at, um, how many actually, um, you know, how many do we estimate are property, uh, tax owners, or, sorry, property owners? So taking seventy percent of that, we, we went through the calculations and, on your staff summary, that's, that's kind of how we derived a, uh, low estimate of five-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and then a high of four-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred. It, it really truly is, is an estimate. Uh, we, we aren't sure. Uh, the only other way we could look at it to see, okay, now, we have two comparable counties, how might we, you know, we look at that for, for the county impacts. Looking at the Census Bureau, uh, we have seen that the Los Alamos County median income, household income is a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven, and Santa Fe's is sixty-four-thousand-four-twenty-three. So that's, that's where we see, uh, higher usage for Santa Fe County. So then looking at it for San Juan County, we're actually, our, our median household income is lower, uh, forty-seven-thousand-four-eight-five. So really what that, that tells us is, is, you know, I don't expect the four-point-two million, but worst-case scenario, we would have four-point-two million, but maybe around six-hundred, seven-hundred, um, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, that, that could impact the county. Uh, this is something that should, uh, you all proceed, i- it, it's an ordinance process. Uh, so the, the requirement under statute was that we, uh, duly advertise the public hearing, uh, required it to be in the paper as well as, as radio. Uh, we, we did satisfy those, those requirements. Uh, and so at, at this point, uh, if there's any questions, I can answer them, but we do have to do a, a public hearing. Um, after the public hearing, uh, we are, staff is requesting input from you all, if you would like to proceed with that ordinance process, or, um, if, if we don't proceed, it would be, um, something that's, uh, the next odd year, uh, so twenty-twenty-five, we would bring back to you all. Statute is clear that every odd year, if we don't have an ordinance in place, we redo that, that process. Uh, and so that's kind of what, what, uh, would take place. And, uh, Mr. Sawyer, if I'm missing anything related to that?
No, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners, um, if we were, if you were to decide to adopt an ordinance, it needs to be within thir-, it needs to be passed within thirty days of your decision. So we would have to draft the ordinance tomorrow, which we could do, um, because we have templates we could use, and we could get it on the February twenty-first agenda. And that would include advertising. So just in case you decide you do want to enact an ordinance, we could get that done within thirty days.
Do you have any information, like, uh, say, Duniana County, have they brought that in front of their commission? Is there any other large counties that you can think of besides, I mean, I know Santa Fe and Los Alamos. Any other ones that have?
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, Commissioners, I've noted, there's been a lot of, um, emails going back and forth among the attorney affiliate, because this is kind of news to everybody. And so there's really just a few. I know Colfax County was considering it. Um, I can't remember the names of some other counties, but, but it's kind of, it's, a lot of other counties are considering it, at least, um, having this hearing because they're required to. As far as how many are actually going to enact an ordinance, that's unknown, yeah.
And then my only other question is, what does this cost the state of New Mexico?
Uh, Mr. Chair, great question. It, it would cost zero to the state. It is solely a, uh, county rebate, uh, and, and you bring up a, a good point, because if you look at property tax, there's not only the county mill, uh, but you have the municipalities, the school districts, um, the college, and the state. And so should you all proceed with this ordinance, we would be paying a hundred percent of, of that, um, tax bill, up to the, the maximum of the three-hundred-and-fifty. Great question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do need to have, uh, open up for-
I think we need to open up. Do we have any comments? We'll open it up for, for anybody that has. Hope for, yeah, we need to open for a public hearing. Do we have any in the public that would like to comment? All right. Seeing none hearing done.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cox, um, I was earned the impression that we had to pay back the state. Is that not the, the case?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner McDaniel, you, you're absolutely correct. What would happen is, um, at the conclusion of the, the tax filing, Tax and Rev would collect all of the data in terms of the rebate. They would send the county a bill, which we, um, have to promptly pay within thirty days.
I will leave the public hearing now and go back to, uh, meeting. I'll seek a motion. Just to comment.
Question, um, Mr. Chair. So, the property tax money that the c-, uh, county collects from that, it's rebated to individuals who, who, who are eligible. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schrodstein, the way it would work is, is normal property tax, um, you know, process. So any, any, um, property owner would, would, would have their property assessed, the treasurer would bill it, um, they, they pay their, their property tax bill. At the end of the, uh, calendar year, so let's just, take, take me as an example. So if I qualified, I would pay my property taxes this, this year, uh, well, actually, we're in tax season, let's use twenty-twenty-two. I paid my property taxes in twenty-twenty-two. I'm gonna go file my tax return. So I file my, my state tax return. On the state tax return, there's actually a section for property tax rebate. I fill that information out. The state will, as part of my refund, give me my maximum amounts of a hundred-and-seventy-five or three-fifty, or that percentage, if it doesn't get to that amount. And, uh, they'll, the state will do that for everybody that qualifies for the program. At the conclusion of, and, and I, I, I don't know the specific date, but at the end of the tax season, s-, the state, taxation and revenue, will then send us, San Juan County, a bill that says you had, you know, three thousand people, um, file for the rebate, that, that we paid the rebate. We then cut that state of New Mexico taxation and revenue a check for that amount. And it comes out of the revenue stream of, of our, our, we current property tax base.
One right there.
Yeah, we have all of it.
Well, beans, we didn't have any public comment. Um, it'd be my suggestion to, it's back down. I heard it on the radio. I can't say as I seen it in print, but I heard it on the radio, and I don't listen to the radio. I heard it.
So you want a motion?
Please.
Okay. I move that we not accept this, uh, tax reduction at this time.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Consideration of Resolution Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Forty-Five, uh, cannabis. Mr. Sawyer?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, Resolution Number Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Eight, uh, adopted by the, the board in October fifth, twenty-twenty-one, appointed, uh, Judge William Bertsall and, uh, Douglas Echols as our variance hearing officers under the cannabis regulation ordinance. Um, now, uh, Mr. Bertsall has announced his retirement, which has left a vacancy. And so as a result, uh, San Juan County staff recu-, request that the board adopt Resolution Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Forty-Five, appointing Chester Miller, uh, who's a local attorney in town, to, um, to act as hearing officer to fill that vacancy. Um, Mr. Miller is, is experienced in the practice of administrative law. As a matter of fact, he, he handles our, our employee grievance hearings, which is, it's been a long time, but, uh, but he's handled those for us for several years. Um, also, Resolution Number Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Forty-Five would increase the variance application fee from one-hundred dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to better compensate the county for its expenses associated with variance hearings. We find that it costs normally at least five-hundred dollars to conduct a cannabis variance hearing, and that's just the cost of the judge. Um, we've looked around and we know that the cities of Farmington, Bloomfield, and Aztec all charge two-hundred-and-fifty for, for variance hearings, not necessarily cannabis, but all variance hearings. So we thought we would bring the fee up in line, if, if you're willing to do that. Of course, if you decide you want to keep the fee in place at one-hundred, we can do that as well. We'll just amend the, the, we'll, we'll change the resolution for you to sign. Um, but, uh, staff would ask that you adopt Resolution Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Eight, I mean, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Forty-Five. Thank you.
And the reason for the increase in the fee is related to the time?
Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Madam Ki-, or Commissioner, um, yes, it's the, the amount of time. It's usually, uh, we, we have to pay our, our hearing officers about two-hundred dollars an hour, and it normally takes at least three hours. There's, uh, preparation time, and then there's a time associated with the hearing. That's just for the, the, paying the hearing officer. There's also staff time, of course, but, but we can't, um, you know, we, we want to stay in line with what the other cities are charging. That was the reason for our recommendation.
So you pay the attorneys how much, you know?
Uh, two-hundred dollars per hour.
And other cities pay up to two-fifty?
They pay two-hundred, well, I don't know what they charge, what they pay their hearing officers, but, um, but I was just, uh, giving that as an example of the cost of what it cost us to conduct the hearing, because we, we want to have experienced, um, attorneys handle this, who know administrative law. And normally, just the attorney costs five-hundred dollars in addition to our other costs. I would assume that it would cost the municipalities just as much.
So this doesn't really cover the costs that we're talking about?
No, it, no, it doesn't. Um, you could potentially, you could go higher than, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars if you wanted to, if you wanted to try to more fully compensate, uh, the county for the cost of those hearings. We just thought that we would suggest two-hundred-and-fifty to keep it in line with what the other municipalities are charging.
How many have we had up to date, up to this date?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I actually don't know. I, I, I-
Nine?
Ten, okay.
So ten.
That's since July first?
Sure.
Of last year.
Yes, and, Mr. Chairman, I think we have three in the pu-, in the pipeline as well.
Yeah, I have three more, uh, Commissioners, I have three more that are coming up in, as soon as we get a new hearing officer on. I have the application sitting on my desk currently. So we're looking at also the fact that what's coming up is people have got a year in now, and they're deciding that they want to add things like manufacturing, or I have one of the ones that you're gonna rehear come through, is for a consumption area added on to one of the retails. So because we didn't, at the time, and this is so new for everybody, we didn't think about, well, at one hearing, let's just do everything you want to do, which is what we're encouraging people to do now. We're gonna start revisiting people who, too small a space, now they want to enlarge, or they want to add on manufacturing, or maybe a retail that wants to add the consumption area. So we're gonna see some rehearings coming through for additional variance requests. So it, it will, it will add on to the cost to the county.
So they'll have to pay another fee?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Pardon me. They will, they'll have to-
That microphone, but, somebody brought that microphone?
I have bronchitis thing going, so I apologize. I-
Sterilize it.
I, sterilize me. So I, I will be hacking through everything, but, but basically, that's kind of what we're looking at in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seek a motion to approve.
I move that we approve Resolution Number Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Forty-Five, appoint, yeah, appointing, uh, cannabis variance hearing officer, increasing application fee.
Right, second thought.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing any unanimous? All right. Thank you. We're gonna bring you back up anyway, right?
He has a re-hearing.
Go ahead. Another variance.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we bring before you consideration and application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Resolution Ordinance One-Twenty for DNR Farms, one-fifty-four, Road Three-Fifty in Aztec. Virginia L. Rogers of DNR Farms submitted a variance petition application to the Community Development Department dated October twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-two. DNR Farms is planning an indoor cannabis production or grow facility with a carbon filtration system. Pardon me. There is one residence within three-hundred feet of the cannabis facility, approximately sixty-two feet away. DNR is seeking a variance from Section Three-A of the ordinance, or the minimum separation distance from a residence requirement. For this one residence, application, applicant is seeking a variance to last the life of the business at the location. Public hearing was held before hearing officer Douglas A. Echols on January fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Notice that the hearing was posted online and at the site, and was delivered to the property within three-hundred feet, as well as by mail to the property owner. No one appeared at the hearing to speak against the variance, nor were any negative comments received at our office. Hearing officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends requests for variance be granted. The applicant's representative is here.
Questions?
I just have one question. And so from the comments here, there was no opposition to this variance?
No, not this time.
From the closest one is sixty feet?
Yes, if you, if, Mr. Chair, if you have the map, I think, as part of your packet, it shows that the, there's basically a parcel, and then there's a trailer that's kind of next to the parcel, it's sixty-two feet away.
And they specifically received notice?
We do door notice, yes. And then we also sent a mail notice to the property owner who does not live on site.
Move that we, that we approve the.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Strategic Plan twenty-two, twenty-two. Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, see if the microphone's first with the cock. I'll try this again. You know, we're at a completion of twenty-two, which is an exciting time, because we get to really come before you to talk about what we accomplished. So as a background, the Commission, at the time, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting, adopted this great two-page strategic plan. It's got twenty initiatives. Eight of those initiatives relate to economy, five relate to place, six relates to people, and then one to relations. Certainly want to give thanks to Mr. Neely for developing this. It's a very eye-catching tool that Mr. Stark and I have used at not only our state of the county addresses, but, you know, we've tried to get it out into the community. Various groups have have received this. I know that Mr. Stark, anytime he has a public meeting, he takes copies, because it's, you know, we we know that these are the critical initiatives that that you all, as a Commission, have set forth over the next five years, and and so it's something that we we want to accomplish, you know, over that course of time. Thanks to Mr. Smith here, he created, using the Achieve It program, that we've engaged with software company. It's a strategic planning and performance management software. We've essentially taken, I guess I should backtrack, we took these twenty initiatives after it was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one, and we met with all the elected offices and department heads, and we said, hey, any of these initiatives, if they impact you one way, shape, or form, or if you have any excitement about these initiatives, please attend this meeting. And so what we did is we developed a lot of various tasks to accomplish these initiatives on your behalf. And so using the Achieve It software, we took all those tasks where we can kind of track, put deadlines, and also provide status updates. We've created this this great summary. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we had four initiatives. We had the Make Us Shine, tree planting, law enforcement, and shop local. Within some of those, I want to talk a little bit of some of the tasks. Happy to say, all four initiatives were certainly accomplished. Now, when we say we accomplished them, it doesn't mean that we accomplished it, and then we just, you know, we put it on the shelf. We'll continue to support law enforcement. We'll continue to make the county shine. We'll continue to plant those trees. Actually, the Cedar Hill Boat Launch, just saw a purchase of trees related to that. So we'll continue these these various initiatives. But given that they are the two thousand and twenty-two, we want to talk about what was accomplished. So for supporting law enforcement, I won't go through all of the tasks, but a couple I want to highlight. We were very fortunate that our legislative delegation pulled together the funds needed to purchase a brand-new sheriff's office helicopter that was estimated right now at two point nine million. It's supposed to be delivered December of this year. Certainly an exciting time to to see that in our region, because it is, it's a regional asset. Additionally, the Commission had approved the recruitment and retention grants that was funded by the state of New Mexico. That was a three point one five million dollar grant, so a very large grant to our county. That grant plan approved by you all had provided fifteen thousand dollar hiring bonuses for new officers and or lateral transfers, and then a fifteen thousand dollar retention stipend, something that's that's helped to to get additional folks into the sheriff's office. Moving on to the the next initiative, Make Us Shine, you know, there's been quite a few activities in that with with these tasks, and it's not just San Juan County. I want to actually point out, public companies have helped us as well. Mesa Sand and Gravel actually partnered and did a cleanup on on Road three fifty, you know, so we're trying to get that, you know, community outreach, trying to get their support. Let's let's organize a lot of different cleanups, and so that's just one that happened during the year. We additionally, with the American Rescue Plan Act, we purchased those three digital billboards. Mr. Neely has already put up a lot related to cleaning up the county, and so it's something that's that's beneficial. You need to drive by it, it's a good reminder for us, you know, to where do we put that trash? We have additionally partnered with the New Mexico Department of Transportation for highway cleanups. There were spring cleanups on Highway sixty-four and five sixteen, and then also in the fall, there was cleanup on Highway sixty-four between Water Flow and Farmington. Just another show of partnership, working with the Department of Transportation, where now we're looking to schedule those quarterly, to try to continue to clean up those those gateways. So a lot, a lot of different tasks, a lot, you know, certainly, you know, when we talk about, you know, these initiatives are certainly not done and over with, you know, cleaning up the county is certainly not one that will go away. It's something that we will continue and to try to to keep things clean. The next initiative was shopping local. That one's unique. It's unique in the fact that when we look at our purchasing, so this is just looking at, how did San Juan County do in terms of shopping local? We have a lot of regulation, a lot of state law, our, you know, procurement code that we have to follow, where, you know, low bid wins, and that means that maybe because it was a low bid, it could have been out of of our our region. So barring those those items, we're really excited to share that for two thousand and twenty-two, we spent just shy of fifteen million dollars of the county's operating budget locally. And on this this summary here, it breaks out where those, you know, that spending happened. And so it's great to see that it was really throughout the region where we were able to shop local. And then lastly, the the tree planting. Tree planting itself, you know, certainly something that that will continue. We've worked at McGee Park, looking at, you know, hey, how could we, out there, as well as all of the county buildings, so apologies, personal facilities, what what county buildings, county areas could we potentially plant trees? And Mr. Hill and his group had identified one hundred and seventy-five trees that could be planted on county-owned properties. Now, it's not just something that, hey, let's take one hundred and twenty, one hundred and seventy-five trees and plant them. They take a little bit of care to to ensure that they can sustain themselves. But we're happy to say in two thousand and twenty-two, we were able to plant fifteen trees out at McGee Park. Public Works has planted some fruit trees at the transfer stations. And lastly, actually, the the leadership San Juan group that I was part of wasn't my my group's project, but but one of the groups actually planted trees out at the Growing Forward Farm. A lot of trees out there, certainly. Ms. Hopkins, you have an update to in our department head meeting. Lot of of really old trees that they were able to raft and get planted, replanted. So it's it's an asset to our our region. That's just a few of the tasks that that were accomplished, you know, related to the strategic plan, but there's a lot. And, you know, we can't thank, you know, the elected offices, the county staff, department heads, everybody coming together, the community, really to to accomplish these. I look forward to the two thousand and twenty-three initiatives, something that really, when we look at all of the initiatives, not not, you know, they're not just started in the year that that they're they're there, you know, we just think it's the year that we can accomplish it. So we've already already begun those those next four initiatives of supporting drilling, the film industry hub, staff development, and county-wide recreation. So we'll we'll continue to work towards those initiatives. If you all had anything in mind, please certainly reach out to Mr. Stark and I, so we can make sure we get that incorporated in. But at this time, I'll just stand for any questions. Just wanted to update you guys.
Mr. Chairman? Can any of that be changed? Because I was thinking, two thousand and twenty-three, we just had a new Navajo Nation president, and Navajo Nation relations might be good for two thousand and twenty-three, because in four years, he's going to be gone, the new president and VP.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Totachini, that's a great question, and it's actually something that, you know, in terms of changing, that's a lot harder, because then we have to open up the entire strategic plan. But, like I said, not not each initiative, it's more of, hey, when can we accomplish it? And so having the new Navajo Nation president now is great, because we want to start to have, you know, as many, you know, quarterly meetings as we can now, and improve and strengthen those relations. So by two thousand and twenty-five, we can say, hey, we had the best, you know, time, best process, we got X, Y, Z projects completed, and really then show in two thousand and twenty-five, you know, when we have this sheet, we could just show over that course of time with President Niigren's office. Does that work for you, Commissioner?
Yeah, okay, all right. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Totachini, I would just add, you know, all these initiatives, of course, we're taking them year by year, but the reality is, we're working on them as we go. The prime example is two thousand and twenty-six, we have the freight rail line. Of course, you all know, we're actively working on that grant right now from the Federal Railroad Administration cooperatively with the Navajo Nation to have the feasibility study done and completed for looking at bringing a freight rail line up from the I forty corridor. So, yeah, to Mr. Cox's point, we could certainly look to adjust if you really think it's important, but these these initiatives are being worked on regardless of what year we're in, knowing that we need to do work, in some of these cases, a lot of work before we would get to a freight rail line in the Navajo Nation's relations. We're, you participated in our meeting before President Niigren even took office, and I know there's a desire to to meet quarterly and to continue those meetings that we had previously with President Ness, because it's so important that we work collectively and collaboratively together. So I just wanted to add that, because it it's absolutely true, we're working on all these initiatives as we go.
Thank you. No question. Thank you for this, because again, it's always nice to look at this, and it just, it makes it simple when you first see it, and it's very eye-catching, and then also to have this written out, how some of these things have been accomplished, that's very helpful. It doesn't get into a huge document and get lost in all the words, so. And I was just curious, when you're talking about shop and local, what type things are being bought? I know, like, trees, that type thing, but what?
Yeah.
Thing, but.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fortner, that's a great question, and it's going to be a wide variety. I mean, if you just look at something simple as our our building here, any type of repair that was needed, actually, I have a perfect example. Our point-of-view committee, the county, one of the suggestions under request was the employee breakroom area has an oven and a stove top that's that's very old and really doesn't keep its temperature, and so they can't, you know, either they burn it or they undercook it. Could we get it replaced? And so something that's certainly we could do, and our facilities person that's in charge of this this building actually went to a local appliance store and purchased those directly. So that's that's just one real good example of how we're trying to keep it local in our area.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I did neglect to say, I believe Mr. Neely is going to try to get this this sheet on the website, so that way everybody can see all of the things that we've.
Thank you. Yeah, from San Juan County to Washington, D.C., to even Alaska, you know, we always take this with us, and we show other people what we're doing, and it, people are just amazed at how simple it is, it's quick, it's right to the point, and it's very easily read. And so I commend the staff and even the commissioners that were in on drafting it. Job well done, for sure.
And we just have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is with the New Mexico Counties Conference being here, that's something that we can really set out. I mean, I know that that's been advertised over the course of the last year, but this may be a tool that will be helpful to other counties.
Yeah.
In, you know, doing their strategic plans, so.
Absolutely. Right, great. Thank you.
Very much appreciate you. All right, number seven, review Board of Committees and Appointments. Mr. Stark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Last item before you tonight, this is an annual item that we bring to you, to have you all review our board and committee appointments and assignments, either by grant agreement or by funding that we provide to an agency, we end up with these board seats. And so I know, last meeting, I passed this out to you, and I'd received some individual feedback from you regarding boards you wanted to continue on or be added to, and so this list before you should be reflecting the most current list, and I want to thank Brenda in our office for reaching out to all the representatives that were not related to county staff, to make sure they're confirmed to wanting to represent on some of these advisory committees, and we've confirmed that with them. So I could stand for any questions you might have, and look for your approval of this item tonight.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to provide this as information to help out. I'm the vice chair for the MPO this year.
All right. Excellent. Anybody want to add their name some more? All right, I'll stand for motion.
I move that we adopt the boards and commission appointments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing any? All right. Long awaited, apart from the county managers. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, Commissioners, I hope I don't disappoint. I do have one item for you tonight, want to talk about the legislative session and tracking of bills, and then with your permission, I'd like to defer one item until after public comment, if I could do that, Mr. Chairman. So before you is our tracking list that we're using to track all the bills that are being introduced down in Santa Fe during this sixty-day session. And as of just a few minutes ago, the current statistics are as follows. We have five hundred and forty-five bills that have already been introduced. We still have a little ways to go. Last date for introducing bills is February sixteenth. So just based on where we're at, you could probably double the number that you're seeing. So that's going to be the number of bills that we're tracking. The list we currently have, which was just updated a day and a half ago, we've got, gosh, tell you exactly here, sixty-nine bills on this list in front of you that we feel like either going to impact San Juan County positively or negatively. So we track them all, one way or the other. I also added, I know Commissioner Fortner serves as our appointment, or representative on the New Mexico Counties Board, and they're closely watching what's going on, so I've added on your list anywhere where a bill may not, may be specific to counties as a whole, so I've listed that, you know, it's on the New Mexico Counties tracking list, so you can see how we're lining up on tracking bills relative to them. There's a couple on here that are just specific to San Juan County, so you wouldn't see that that's going to be a priority or interest of New Mexico Counties. Generally speaking, right now, most of the bills are just getting assigned to committees. There may have been some bills that have had a hearing, but the majority of of the discussion and dialogue is going to start happening next week, is when things are really going to heat up. So, of course, we'll keep you updated on a weekly basis, or in some cases, maybe daily if needed, just to let you. cases, maybe daily if needed, just to let you know where things stand. And if there's anything that we need to do to be present or other elected officials I know are carefully watching bills, I'm looking at the clerk as the election bill has resurfaced again. So I know there'll be lots of different bills that are going to have different interest. And so this should be the go-to list for you. And we'll keep it updated online through New Mexico Legislative Reports. And any questions you have, please don't hesitate to reach out. Said, there's a lot of action and more action to come. So I can stand for any questions you might have. I appreciate you putting on the watch list, the water, the county clerk stuff, the gun laws, some stuff that is very important. It may not be, you know, affect the county directly, but it does our citizens and things. And I appreciate you putting that on there. Makes it a lot easier for me. It filters through 544. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say thank you. And I know when, so we meet weekly with New Mexico County, the executive board, and we go over the ones that are on the New Mexico County tracking list. So if there's something on there that I need to be aware of, please let me know that, because we meet every Thursday at 11:00. I know when the last time we met, Tonya, the clerks at all just met regarding the one bill. So anyway, I know that there was a neutral stance taken on that because of the current discussion.
And Chair and Commissioners, that's correct. And I appreciate you reaching out, asking for that, how the clerks actually had voted. I do want to just clarify, my office specifically is tracking, as of last week, over 20 bills that I don't believe are in this list. There was, mine were actually deleted. And so I had to, I had to create a separate account that, that, yeah, that Mike's not aware of. So this is a surprise to him. But I will definitely make sure that even through that separate account that I communicate what we're watching specifically so that you do have a correct list. Thank you.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. That's all I have for you tonight.
Yeah?
Well, I deferred an item.
Yeah, but that's.
That's pretty good for you.
Sure, sweet.
Like that. Reports from elected officials and department heads.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Have some announcements and an introduction for you tonight from the Office of Emergency Management. First item that I have on my list is congratulations to my former emergency management coordinator, Ally Rye. You may or may not know that she was appointed by the governor as the deputy cabinet secretary for the Department of Homeland Security. Very proud of her. She came from a good organization, a good county, and we have a feather on our cap in Santa Fe. And I know that she'll do her best to take care of San Juan County as needed. So we're very proud of her. The next item on my list is I asked the Commission to please save the date, March 22nd, at 11 o'clock at the Civic Center for my Homeland Security kickoff seminar for my annual training and exercise. This will be the first time we've done the seminar in three years. We didn't do it during the COVID years and last year we skipped doing it because we were getting back to our training and exercise program. The next thing I'd like to introduce, my new coordinator, Ms. Don Knoppel. She's been with me 10 months, 10, almost 11 months. And that's important because I want to brag about her. We received our Homeland Security grant this last week and in the amount of $647,724.12. Can't forget because you put very hard about that. The most we've received from this Homeland Security grant in the past 20 years. So it is our first grant that she wrote for the office and she knocked it out of the park. So very proud of her. And I'll let her brag about some of the teams. And for the benefit of Commissioner McDaniel, we do team sustainment with our Homeland Security Grant for our bomb teams, our SWAT team, our hazardous materials team, and even our helicopter here at the county. So we use that grant for team sustainment to keep our teams going. And I'll let you give the announce.
The San Juan County Law Enforcement Agencies, which is the San Juan County Sheriff's SWAT Team, Farmington SWAT, Farmington Bomb, received $199,644.28. The helicopter got $38,293.76. Training and exercise, which is for emergency management, plus the bomb team, was $59,910.6. And then the hazmat team, hazmat tech rescue team, got $333,876.2. And then for CERT train, or CERT kits and Stop the Bleed kits, we got $16,000.
Job well done.
Great.
Thank you. Be a nice amount.
Just have one question.
Yes, ma'am. We have a question.
I was just curious, on the 22nd, is that a little bit different than what we watched? I don't remember when it was last fall that you had over here, Senate.
Yes, the EOC function is what you came to observe. I believe you came with Jack one year, we had a luncheon at the Civic Center, and that's where we do have a keynote speaker and we talk about our training and our exercise program.
There was a gentleman that told about his story as in.
As a fire chief?
Yep.
And this year, we are having an active shooter exercise at San Juan College. So our keynote speaker is going to be Mr. Carpenter, Kurt Carpenter, about the Aztec school shooting and how important exercise and training was for their incident.
Thank you. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Any other departments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask if we could look at transfer stations, waste is accepted. Received a few complaints from some of my constituents regarding some light remodel materials that they had that were refused. So I'd like to see if we could do a study and see much more it would potentially cost the county to, or policies to ensure that it's just from residents, not from businesses. I know that was a big issue for a while. Businesses would show up with trailer loads of remodeled construction materials. But figure out if we could fashion a policy that would ensure that it's residential and from the homeowner and just look into that, see if there's a way that we can accommodate that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck said we'd be happy to look into that. I'll get with Mr. Farrell and his team and see what we might be able to do. And I know, just for the benefit of everybody, you know, today, our policy absolutely doesn't allow for commercial and business waste or construction or demolition debris. And so that's where like a residential project would get caught up in that. Our tenants would have no way to know, you know, how that's specific to a home. And so we'd be happy to look at that and bring some recommendations back to you, if any exist. Anybody else? All right, I just have one. I just liked an update on our Guardian initiative. I mean, I already know because I've been keeping really, I've been keeping track of it because it just amazes me.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So they, the team was originally tracking for yesterday or today. They've slowed down just a little bit and I just checked and they're looking like they're going to come in very late tomorrow. We're excited to have them back, not just because we're covering their workload, but because of the huge feat they've undertaken and boy, the fan base they've acquired. Everywhere I go, people are stopping and asking me what's going on, what they're eating and the bucket's getting cleaned. Regardless, it looks like late.
We still have time to fly down there and welcome them.
If you live like right now, I think it's about a 24-hour trip. So mine'd arrive the same time as them.
The weather's much better.
Watch on Facebook.
Do we know what caused the slowdown in the last 100 miles?
Don't. I hate to speculate. Maybe something as small as a small illness with one of them. So two were having to row and the third one's unable to. I hate to speculate. We'll put them on the spot when they get back and then they'll tell us. Yeah, we're excited.
Yeah, appreciate that. Comment, sorry, excuse me. Comments and input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes per subject. The Commission has not previously discussed or formal action has been taken on. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to the comments or the input that the general public has. Anyone? There's no comments. Could I, could I interject just one second? Mr. Chairman and Mr. Beck said, is that okay?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, I'd like to have our fire chief, John Muller, come up. I know he doesn't want to come up. You're still on the inter, I'll get up here.
Yeah.
I'm really going to try hard not to throw anything at you.
I appreciate it.
So today is his last day. He announced his retirement about four weeks ago, roughly. And I give him kudos. He's staying here till the very last minute and.
Probably go.
But maybe so, yeah. Especially if you stay for your party.
Eating cake doesn't count.
No.
On the clock until that cake's gone.
But I, as county manager and in my office, I know you all will have some more sentiments and probably want to share those. But I'd just like to recognize John's service. It'll be an understatement to say that we're going to absolutely miss his talents and leadership and dedication to the citizens of San Juan County. He's been doing this for 28 years in the fire, fire service. He's, we've had the privilege and benefit of having him as part of our team for the last, last five years, four years as chief and a year as deputy chief. And we've been better off for it as an organization and the county as a whole. You know, it's just, you think of all the things that he's been able to accomplish over his short time here. And I just want to mention a few of them because they're major accomplishments. You know, first and foremost, the contract that we have to provide fire services to the city of Bloomfield, that was a major accomplishment. And I can tell you, it's a win-win for the citizens of Bloomfield and the citizens of San Juan County that were able to provide those mutual services collectively together. Big update to departmental SOPs during his time here. That's a big undertaking to bring all the districts together and standardize, you know, all the standard operating procedures. And just here recently, you know, we brought before you all and you were willing to approve an increase to the nominal fee, which we think is very much needed to help continue to incentivize volunteerism within the fire department. And that, that took some time to really, you know, crunch the numbers and make sure we were compliant with FLSA and John to lead that through. So I just can't say thank you enough, John, on behalf of the citizens of San Juan County. And we want to recognize you with this plaque and of course, the party hereafter sends you off to your new career. He's not retiring to the couch, I want you to know. See, he's retiring to go to work at Bloomfield Schools here in the middle of the month, February. So I also do want to recognize wife Adana and family. And I know your mom and dad, John and Mary are here. Thank you for sharing, John, with us. The job's extremely demanding. I know it pulls attention away from family and, and so thank you. It's a, takes a lot. So it takes, takes a, takes a community. Takes, it takes a village to be able to do the job of a fire chief. So anyway. I better stop because I'm getting emotional. But I'll turn it over to our Commissioners. He may have a few words for Mr. Muller.
So thank you very much, John. And I saw your daughters out there. Is that correct?
Daughter and son, yeah.
Okay, daughter and son. Okay. So thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure, you know, just a couple of years in working with you. But I've learned a lot and you just made it easy to understand. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been an honor.
All right, well, you can withdraw it right now.
No?
No?
I don't think so. I think it's.
I'll still let you eat the cake, even if you withdraw it.
No, I like food as the cake, so.
No, thank you. Thank you for everything. I, I can't add much more to that, but thank you.
Don't be a stranger.
Before Navajo Nation took over their fire services, thank you for all that you did. And also, you know, with the farmers, sometimes they forget about when they burn the weeds and you've always helped out with that. And thank you for that information I think you gave to me on the fireworks. So I really appreciate that. We'll miss you.
Well, mine's a little more upbeat than that. My first day on the job, I asked the chief to take me on a tour of some of the fire stations so I could see and feel like I was involved. Got in the truck. I was so excited because we're going to have running lights, sirens, speeding, none of that. He drove under the speed. It took us forever. But I do appreciate you taking the time and making us feel welcome and good luck. I know you don't need it.
Thank you. It's been an honor. I'm sure the next chief will take great care of you. I appreciate it.
Would you all like to?
Can I say something there?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I just want to say congratulations, John. I've known the Mollers forever, I think. Grew up with them. And of course, my career was law enforcement and I respect firemen, police officers, you know, law enforcement and all kinds of public servants. But you're one of the best. Thank you. And happy retirement, so to speak. I know you're not going to be really retired. But anyway, congratulations. Thank you for your job.
All right, I'll take a picture. All right, we'd like to invite everyone up to, for cake outside and represent, or celebrate. Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, if I could, just one more item. And I do have Chief Muller's permission on this. We didn't want to upstage him, but we thought it would be appropriate to let you know. We went through a recruitment process to, to find our next fire chief. And we completed that yesterday. And I'm happy to announce that David Vega will be the San Juan County. David has 27 years in the fire service, four years as deputy chief for San Juan County. He started his career as a volunteer back in 1996. I know he doesn't look like it. He's that old. But he's been doing it for a long time and we're happy to have him on board and join our team. So as the fire chief, as the fire chief. So that's all I have for you tonight. All right, thank you. Mr. Chair, I move that we.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recess for 15 or 20 minutes to enjoy some of Chief Muller's retirement party. And after that, we'll, the commission will go into closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation in which the county is a participant, specifically the Navajo Nation redistricting lawsuit pursuant to section 10151H7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Adams.
All right.
Are we, uh, are we good?
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh, go back into our regular meeting and, uh, state that we, uh, did not discuss anything outside of the Navajo Nation redistricting lawsuit while we were in closed session.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. Both in parrays.